Follow this meeting to order, please stand with the fledge of allegiance. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
Trusty Pauling.
Right.
Trusty Laughlin.
Here.
Clerk Clavitch, here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Are we here? Trusty Crowell.
Here.
Trusty Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, moving forward, we did amend the agenda, but if you have the older agenda before you, um. It should have a new business item number eight, which is the Alpena County Road Commission, which is the document before you. If you still are operating on the older agenda, I guess I would. Ask that, uh, we amend the agenda to show new business item eight, Alpena County of the Commission Road Agreement. As number eight, um, are there any other changes, fractions or substitutions in the agenda as presented? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Yes, we have a motion and support. Uh, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of adoption of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, please stand at the podium and state your name, um, limiting yourself to three minutes. If there's any public comment online, uh, please use the bottom pass bar under the ellipsis of more to raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify you. Seeing no public comment in person or online, uh, we will move on, uh, to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, that entertain a motion to adopt or approve the consent agenda as presented.
Just I want to understand the, uh, Thunder Bay Island Lighthouse Preservation Letter.
Yeah.
So just, just to pull that off the agenda and very quickly let me understand. Why wouldn't we want to have a fire on an island?
Uh, that's pretty much their position as well. So, um. We have, uh, as everybody knows, so the township is trying to ascertain the remaining hundred and sixty-one acres of Thunder Bay Island. Uh, the bureau that is currently held by the Bureau of Land Management. Um. A, a member of Huron Pines through AmeriCorps and their coastal invasive species team, uh, was tasked with actually surveying the hundred and sixty-one acres, uh, that the BLM still holds. And his recommendation to combat, uh, three different invasive species was to burn everything. And so henceforth their letter is, uh, give them a consideration that all historic structures would be imperiled. And no means, uh, to combat a fire fourteen miles out in the lake, um, that it's not supported.
All right, so I mean, it's just like, when I read that, I'm like, wow, this sounds like some government agency is, is saying. Just throw a match, we'll have a controlled burn on an island.
Control burn on the island.
I just wanted to make the comment that Jim Jackowitz had asked about payment of bills and that's now going to become a permanent part of our board packets.
Yes. Okay, and the other discussion to the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I moved.
I have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward into old business, uh, we have, uh. Confirmed response from, uh, Michigan Township Association, I believe, uh, Executive Director Sheridan emailed the entire board. And. This has been, uh, postponed, uh, for two meetings until we got, uh, a proper response. Um, the response from MTA, unfortunately, I don't think clarifies any of the questions that I had asked. Um, and it seems like they are fairly firm in their position. Um, and I guess at that point in time, uh, it would be my recommendation to entertain a contract with MML. For the same services that are in the packet and I believe four thousand seven hundred.
Four hundred, four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine.
And forty-nine dollars, which is nearly a what, three thousand dollar?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty, yeah, three thousand dollar cost savings in comparison to MTA. Um, but table's open.
I did some, uh. I did some review on the MML and one of the things that I'm. I just feel as though we're. The representation that we would get would be. Limited, uh, there are literally no townships on the Board of Directors, uh, none, uh, and, and I couldn't find a list of, of townships, but even in their own advertising, they talk about representing cities, villages and urban townships. So. I don't, you know, even if we spent. Two thousand dollars on them, I don't think we're going to get the level of representation that, that. We, we would get otherwise. Now, I'm not suggesting nor am I advocating that we, that we consider going with the league. Well, I mean, with the, with either the M- MTA or the league, but what I think I'm suggesting. Is that if enough people, enough townships decide that the MTA's pricing is too high and they just. Reduce their budget accordingly, uh, I, I personally have only spoken with the MTA. A handful of times, and when I do speak to them, it's somewhat cryptic, uh, and especially in the legal side of it. It's just they, they haven't done a very good job of telling me anything. And so I'm almost more inclined. To, to make a motion that we just not entertain. Any association dues right now and, and. See what happens into the future because I'm just concerned that. Yeah, the MML is a significant savings, uh, but I can't see anywhere in there. Where it would be nothing more than a contribution from us to, uh, to look to help them to. Push their causes, which incidentally, a few years back, the MML, uh. Was pushing. To have the, uh, uh, the revenue sharing. Go away from townships and towards cities, so that bothered me. So, uh, anyway, just, just my thoughts on it, it's, uh. Difficult for me to put my head around something that doesn't have any representation for townships.
I, I'm kind of in, in with Steve on that. I, I didn't see that the MML would actually be in accordance with. The, uh, the needs or the representation at the state level. Or township of our size, uh, the same kind of impression I had is that they're really, uh. Oakland County kind of townships in Oakland County and that kind of thing is, is that this is kind of where their focus would be. And I don't necessarily think that, and that's a good example that I didn't know was about their stance on. Uh.
City, village, township revenue share?
Well, yeah, because. Uh, let's say we have a lot of the untaxed state land and some of all of that going on in this area. So, um, I'm kind of, and I'm not sure. I will tell you, I went to one seminar here recently, uh, with the zoning board of Hills folks, three of us went and, uh. We had a good training session for that specific thing, uh, but. Most of those trainings are above my pay grade and of. Pretty great, I think of this township to pay for those, they're very expensive. Some of them are free, but there, most of them are very expensive. So I, I'd vote in favor of your motion if you made it.
Then did you have any discussion?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, we can, even if we don't join. MTA, we can still attend trainings, there's a higher cost to it. But I don't think we would spend seven thousand dollars a year in higher costs. Uh, I never thought about not joining. Either one, my thought was, let's try Michigan Municipal League for a year. If we don't like it, we can go back to MTA. But I do like your suggestion of not.
I was going to add to, I actually thank you for bringing up, I could, because I said, I thought if we needed to go to seminars or something like that, we can go as non-members.
Right, we just pay a little bit more.
Yeah, minimally more.
And I know every time I have questioned MTA. It always ends with, but you better seek your own.
I belong to both. Uh, because of the different communities that represent and, uh, so I've got access to all the research materials. So when they say go ask your attorney, I'm going right back to them a lot of times. Picking their brains and confirming things that you don't find it on my own. So, uh, so you covered from the attorney's standpoint.
Well, having this conversation, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, that we not join, uh, the MML and that we discontinue our current membership with the, uh, MTA. Super goes.
We have a motion and some support, uh, I then believe Russ already supported. Further discussion?
I was just going to say, I mean, I, I hadn't thought of Steve's idea either, and I was also going to say what Michelle did, that we could go to these trainings and just pay a little bit more, so. That's kind of covered my two thoughts.
Yep, okay. And we have motion support, seeing no further discussion, uh, roll call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving into new business, uh, budget adjustments. One, one principal budget adjustment. Is there a motion to move forward with the budget adjustment as presented?
I moved.
We have a motion on the table to support the budget adjustment as presented, is there support?
Or.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion?
Just the purpose, what, what are we doing there? What, what's going on with that?
We're tr- um, transferring ARPA funds in to cover what the.
In building.
That we approved at the last.
That it just says A, so that's.
Yeah, it does sound, it's ARPA funds.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, see no further discussion, roll call please.
Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving on to the next item of business is, uh, an agreement, uh, for the Thunder Bay Junior High Liaison Officer. Uh, unfortunately, um, due to, uh, well, actually under sheriff, would you like to, uh, address this or?
Well, I mean, I think everybody's aware that the county's got financial issues, um. And this, uh, this agreement has always been split, uh, while it was split two ways, three ways. Um, and if the township and the school system weren't taking on, that would allow us to, uh. Pull our contribution, uh, which would make it a little easier on our budget.
And the school has already agreed to.
Yeah, yes.
So I'll make the motion that we accept the new agreement as presented.
I have a motion on the table to accept the agreement as presented, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion?
Which was it last year?
Through, one third, one third.
Oh, yeah, but in terms of total cost.
And I, in my mind, I'm thinking it was like a thousand dollars or something like that.
Thirty-five or thirty-six.
It's double.
Yeah.
When you get paid the big bucks.
Further discussion?
I think that position is very important for our community, uh. Especially, uh, anyway, I think it's very important. So I, I.
I agree.
I think if we can do it, we should.
Well, you know, that's a very busy position.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
Very busy.
Uh, seeing no other discussion, roll call please.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving on to the next item of new business, which is a water reliability study. In your packet, you'll see a breakout of. What this is, this, uh, a water reliability study should have actually, uh, commenced, I believe, for us in twenty twenty-one. Uh, so we are behind schedule, but the water reliability study and its data points that come out of it are essential to any funding allocation and ask through, whether it be through USDA or the State Revolving Fund, um, this would be, uh, noted as a deficiency, uh, to us as a municipal provider. Um, it, as it states in this document, a sliding scale of lump speed of twenty-one thousand, uh. For if the hydraulic model is available, um, we are actually available and our total cost will be sixteen thousand. I was able to, uh, have that, uh, release from C two A E that conducted that study, um, through our attorneys.
And it, and it fits their software model, I think.
Everything is copacetic. Yep, formatting was fine, and so that, uh, saved us five thousand dollars. Uh, but it is my recommendation to move forward with, uh, the water reliability study in anticipation of, uh, our USDA ask, so.
I make a motion to approve the expenditure of sixteen thousand dollars for the, uh, for the testing that needs to be done.
And we have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion?
This comes out of the, uh.
Professional and contractual services, five nine two, five three seven, eight zero one, zero zero zero.
Which is the, out of the waterfall.
Yes, correct.
The numbers are bad.
Okay. Um. I won't even add to that, I want to.
We all know eight oh one is professional.
Professional. Um, okay, so there's a motion and support, uh, seeing no further discussion, roll call please.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward into the agenda, uh, we have the. Policy and procedure recommendations, Laura, would you like to?
So the, um. We met and we. Updated some policies, so the non-sufficient fund policy was originally approved back in two thousand seventeen, but it never made it into our policy procedure book. So we up, just updated it and, um, basically it's the same that there's a twenty-five dollar non-sufficient fund fee.
We didn't make many changes to that.
No, and then it's, um. The. I don't know, that's statute or the. The act, uh, two thirty-six, um, but anyway, so that's that one that got increased, uh, or just that it's going to be now in our policy and procedure book. And then the ID badges, um, in, in the packet, it shows how, what it used to read and how it will read now. Um, the new verbiage, I'm going to read the old and the new Nathan, or just. Yes, okay, the old verbiage says, these are regarding the ID badges. Mine right here, um, the old verbiage, a fee of ten dollars will be assessed to replace a cost at a cost stolen or damaged badge for replacement for non-public safety. Employees IDs that are replaced due to normal wear and tear will not be assessed to charge. Checks or money orders may be payable to charter, pension, balcony, treasurer, cash, or credit slash debit cards are accepted. So the new verbiage is a fee of ten dollars will be assessed to replace a badge for any reason other than normal wear and tear. Checks or money orders are payable to charter, pension, balcony, treasurer, cash, debit, credit are accepted. Um, there will be a fee for a debit or credit card users. So that, any questions on that one? Um, then the, um, travel.
I can see, I.
I'm sorry.
I don't like the, I understand what normal wear and tear means. Normal wear and tear in my position might be different than normal wear and tear in some other position. Are we taking those sorts of things into consideration that if, if somebody in the DPW is, you know. Gets it all smashed up somehow is, whoa. I mean, in my splitting hairs, are we just using common sense? All right, fair enough.
So, the expense, uh, four point six one, travel and meal reimbursement. The previous, um, reimbursements, reasonable meal expenses shall be reimbursed up to the following amounts as monitored by the township clerk. Breakfast, ten dollars, lunch, fifteen dollars, dinner, twenty. The new amounts are. Um, reasonable meal expenses shall be reimbursed up to the following amounts as monitored by the clerk. Breakfast, fifteen dollars, lunch, twenty, and dinner, thirty, so they all got increased. Um, the next one is the investment and depository policy, the banking, the bank, financial institutions need to be updated. So the new, um, we no longer bank, M Bank has a different name, Chemical Bank is a different name, and we don't bank with PNC anymore. So it's just to update those. To be Nicolay National Bank, Huntington Bank, and Alpena County Credit Union is who we already do business with. Any questions? Okay, um, next one, resolution appendix three purchasing policy. Um, this was changed. We're giving that right down what the change was. Um, okay.
Changed the amount.
We, or the recommendations, so the revision under expenditure control, so it went from purchases. Of, it used to be fifteen hundred dollars or greater require purchase order. Purchase orders will be obtained from the clerk or supervisor by the department head. That got changed to increase from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. Purchase of twenty-five hundred or greater require purchase order, purchase orders will be obtained from the clerk or supervisor by the department head. Then bids under the small purchases for, um, bids and quotes, it went from. Three thousand to five thousand, so any purchases for goods and services exceeding the cost of three thousand dollars shall require the requisition of at least three written quotes prior to consideration of purchase approval by the township board. Um, separating the work of vendors into smaller invoices is a violation of this policy. The new verbiage, like I said, it just increased it by two thousand dollars, so any purchase or goods or services exceeding the cost of five thousand dollars shall require the acquisition or at least two written quotes if possible prior to consideration of purchase approval by the township board, separating the work of the vendors into smaller invoices as a violation of this policy. Um, the next one, dollar threshold requiring sealed bids and requests for proposals. The original was, had twenty thousand in it to increase it to fifty thousand. So any purchase for goods or services exceeding an estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars shall require the solicitation of sealed bids, the department head can cast consultation with the supervisor shall develop bid specifications. Bid specifications for purchase that will exceed twenty thousand dollars shall be approved by the township board, separating the work of vendors into smaller invoices as a violation of this policy. So. It just, the new verbiage is any purchase for goods or services exceeding an estimated cost of fifty thousand dollars shall require the solicitation of sealed bids. Department head in consultation with the supervisor shall develop bid specifications, its specifications for purchase, you know. That will exceed fifty thousand dollars shall be approved by the township board, separating the work of vendors into smaller invoices as a violation of this policy. And then exceptions, um. Quotes and competitive bids are not required for the following purchases. Micro purchases up to five hundred dollars, and it changes that. Quotes and competitive bids are not required for the following purchases, micro purchases up to a thousand dollars.
For department heads, you still have a five hundred. Pardon?
No, that is. I, I thought that was the change to thousand, is that right?
No, that's still at five hundred, it's just the small purchases is what jumped up. So then there's the pop, the procedure there, so. Um. And your, so your question is, was it remaining at five hundred dollars?
Right, for department, it's like if I wanted to buy a new.
One, I think that was fifteen hundred, wasn't it?
Oh, it went up to, um, five thousand.
No, micro, the exception is micro purchases is still at five hundred dollars. If there's small. So the expenditure, expenditure control is went from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars?
Twenty-five hundred.
Or twenty-five hundred? But yeah.
Oh, up here, yeah.
For the exceptions, it was the micro purchases still remained at five hundred dollars.
That's the micro purchase above two.
That was the new work.
Yeah.
But my question is, department heads, we still only have a five hundred dollar spending?
Correct.
Okay, so.
So we're good changing that to a thousand, everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
My question is before we go. It's like it says at least two written quotes, do we have language in here when we cannot get to?
That's what actually we worked on, so that's, that was that was, and if you want to, uh, uh, elaborate on that, Laura.
I have to find where that, where we said that.
Well, it was three, wasn't it?
Oh, at least three, and then we changed it to.
Two.
The small.
Where, where possible.
If possible, yes, if possible, prior to.
Yep, yep. Yeah, because sometimes there's only a single source vendor, or you never hear back from other vendors.
And then we added the, um, ethics policy and procedure that is in everybody's package. It was a new one. So if anybody has any questions on that.
There was one other policy that we worked on, I thought, with that.
But that got moved that, that we had to get more information.
Yeah, we didn't decide.
No, that's a. Then we touch it, yeah, so we'll come back.
So what is the citizens complaint form?
Oh, that's just for if there's, uh.
Ethics.
An ethics complaint.
Oh, okay, that goes with the.
Here's the process.
Okay. And then there's also the chain of command.
So I guess how does it work, the complaint comes to me, does it go to the supervisor or the?
It goes to the supervisor unless I'm to focus up the complaint and then it goes to.
Personnel.
Personnel committee, and then to legal.
And then to the board and that's followed, okay, yep. And then the form is attached for the complaint.
Yeah, no, and the question I had was about the, the time clock.
I'll have to look into that.
Yeah. That's, that was one of the topics that we.
Trying to.
I don't think we made a final decision.
It may not, may not have, I think we've tabled that, so.
Okay, I'll look into that.
I think we may have just sat on that one. Okay, so with that being said, are there any, anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Uh, we have, uh, the amended policy and procedure recommendations coming forth over the policy and procedure, uh, committee. Is there a motion to follow?
There's a motion of the committee, so I will make it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendations brought forth, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trusty Crowell.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Pauling.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. I'm looking forward to new business five, uh, is a. Quote for, well, it's not a quote, it's our.
Renewal.
Our renewal, uh, for property and casualty. Um, we sat down, uh, Michelle and I sat down with, uh, Quentin Meek, uh, from the Sterling Group. Um. Been really. Our, our coverages are fairly comprehensive, they're. All of our, uh, assets are properly listed and insured. And so it's, I, I believe it's our recommendation to move forward, uh, with the, uh, quote that was presented, which is. Our quote, we don't have to go to RFPs on this until.
Next year. We put this on RFP, this year we put out the.
Do we have to, um, is there a total cost? It just look.
And this was an eighty-eight.
Was there like, um, any major change or?
Uh, well, the work comp was, that's always the oddball.
That went up.
That went up. Everything in the market.
It looks like the work comp really bumped because of the mod again.
Yeah. Of which, so I did, I conducted a loss, uh, loss control, uh, meeting with, um.
Accident fund.
Accident, yeah, the accident fund, um, at which point in time, because it had been six years since it did a full review of the township, uh, after two hours, uh, they will not need to conduct a review for six to ten years.
So did they, so I'm assuming that the, the mod's gone up, uh, because of claims.
Yes.
Um, and, and those claims, did they give you a rundown on the loss runs and all that where, uh, you know, do we know when some of them are going to roll off? So they're on a three-year.
Yeah, so, and they're almost evenly spaced, so for the next three years, we're going to have one dropping off. And I think we have, we have three, and so in the hopes that we can mitigate any potential loss and claims over the next three years, within three years, the three that are on our, in our clock, or so to speak.
Yeah.
Will then fall off, and then our mod will then have a reduction.
So if it had been to the board real quickly, that, that's on a three-year site, three rolling cycle. So if there's been. Bad losses three years ago, they'll roll off, and if there's been good losses in between that time or limited losses or small losses, then that mod will come down. I, I highly suggest that we follow those procedures of the accident fund when we have a claim that we have a policy and procedure that you don't just run off to the emergency fox, uh, room, unless it's an emergency. Um, but to seek medical attention as we should have been through a procedure in-house, is that what we still do?
Yes.
Okay, good. That, that can really, really impact the pricing.
Yeah. No, and if you can see that, I know you have a background, so if you want me to forward that email of the accident fund, that way you can have us.
Yeah, and I know that Quentin can do a, can do an analysis on that, too.
Trusty Paul.
So we don't go for.
So we don't go for competitive bids until next year.
Right, yes, yes. This year we go out for the health insurance.
RFP on the health insurance portion, every three years.
On the employee.
Did this go up from last year?
Yeah, yes.
Like a lot or just?
Like eleven percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mostly within the work.
So with that being said, hi. It would be a recommendation uh to move forward with the quote presented through the Sterling Group. Which will then be equally uh split between all departments and the township. So.
I'll I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the total annual green move of eighty eight thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, and we have support. Trustee Laughlin, support, their discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Dirk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Uh, next item of business uh is fire department interim chief. Uh, Cash Ulan.
Yeah, I'll take that. So um, I guess what I'd ask is a motion that uh. Yeah, permission from the board for the personnel committee to um start the process to look for an interim chief. Uh, because I think. Realistically, uh, when Chief Hanson leaves, we don't have that much time. Uh, we'd like to get that process rolling if we find somebody. Uh, before the next meeting, we'd like to be able to have that ability to say. Okay, yeah, we want to, want to get this ball rolling, um, instead of having to call another special meeting and. We can kind of filter that stuff out, so I guess that's what we're kind of looking at.
Oh. How long are you looking for the interim or something, sir? In other words, what kind of commitment should be made?
Four months.
I was thinking four or five month stops.
I'll make a motion that we uh authorize the personnel committee to move forward on the uh cert or interim chief.
We have the authority to hire.
Well, this board has the authority to hire, right?
Well, I think what we're being asked to do is to delegate that to the committee. That's what I understood.
This, yeah, because this is an interim chief, this isn't a full-time replacement, this is a stopgap measure, so I think, is that your?
Yes, yeah, that's what I mean. But this, okay, but then eventually it comes to the board for, but. Okay, I'll amend my motion.
Yes. Let's clarify, what you think's coming to the board, Steve, the hiring of the interim chief?
Well, what I'm hearing is that you're going to hire them and then bring them back to us for, I guess, the financial approval of that.
So we will need to call a special meeting.
Well, uh, unless there's another alternative, I mean, uh, uh, I I've not noticed in the past where we've authorized. Out- outside of that, whatever the normal procedure is, unless we have a time constraint.
Well, I think the time constraint is the fact that we have a time constraint.
Can we do a uh, an email vote on that? Okay.
No.
I have a question. Uh, Tim, uh, can we, can we authorize the committee to? Hire. And expend. Can we delegate that obligation of the full board to a committee to spend? To basically authorize an expenditure of funds?
Yeah, I think we'd have to spell out. The the terms then, as long as you could do that now. Uh, then you'd be delegating the discretion as to the person. You wouldn't.
But we would, but we were, we would put a cap or a limit or an amount on what we said.
Yes, Laura.
I mean, it was my understanding anytime we ever hired anybody at came to this board to get voted in. And I'm, I'm, I would rather it be that way than just saying to, you know, three members of the board to say we're going to hire this person. I I just, that's just my thought. I I would like it to.
I think we should do the search, and when we think we have a suitable candidate. Come back to the board, have a special meeting if we need to.
Yeah, then I guess my motion will stand.
Yeah, okay, so could you repeat that motion?
To authorize the uh personnel committee to begin the process of the search for an interim uh chief. And then to report back to the board.
I will, I'll support that motion.
Yeah, I have a motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none, uh. We won't have a, no expenditure really, so all those in favor. Of uh the motion on the table to allow personnel committee to bring the board recommendations for an interim chief, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Okay, moving forward uh to uh fire department R and R truck repair. This is, and and chief, just correct me if I'm wrong, this is just a continuation of the same. Insurance.
It's a seven.
Second. Okay. Um, and so there's a recommendation from uh Chief Hanson to move forward with. Uh, the repairs on engine one, uh, that total two thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars and ninety four cents. Uh, to utilize GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, 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 vehicle maintenance. We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, further discussion?
The only discussion I have is I take it that eleven hundred and thirty four dollars has been put back into a, into the budget somewhere. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
But the question I have is then. It's twenty two hundred thirty five total, so are we paying the other half out of the line item?
Yeah, of of vehicle maintenance.
And repair.
And repair.
Okay, um. How how did this accident happen? I mean, apparently the undercarriage of the. My uh new engine was uh. Damaged, including the exhaust system, and I saw something that indicated that it was. Out in. In a, in a field, so was it a, was it a grass fire kind of thing, situation?
It was a junkyard.
To the, what am I going to record it?
Is that turned out?
Uh, the fire was at Lee's Auto. Uh, there were several vehicles involved, getting access was the issue. Uh, getting out of there, the roads are not the best. Um, so.
Where's Lee's at?
Just north on twenty three.
This way?
Junkyard, maybe?
This.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I can see how it would be hard to get out of there.
Have they ever been in there? There's dogs all around.
There you have it. Okay, so we need, we have a motion on the table, we need support. It's been moved and supported to move forward with the expenditure of two thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars and ninety four cents. Uh, barring any other discussion, roll call please.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Dirk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. And moving into uh last new business item eight, um, Alpena County Road Mission Road is named. This is for the reconstruction and or, if you will, uh, brand new construction. Of uh Lake Winnia Road uh for point four eight. Uh, miles uh from the apex as it turns to the west. Uh, from point four eight from that curve uh to municipal boundary, which is almost a half mile. Um, this was an anticipated uh road agreement uh within the budgeting process. And uh as you see, uh, this is an opportunity to incorporate a private donor that will be a one-third cost share. Um, so it's my recommendation uh to move forward with the road improvements to Lake Winnia Road, which will be a complete repaving. Um, at the cost of, to us, one hundred and twenty four thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars.
Just a jurisdictional line question, supervisor.
Yes, sir.
I thought the western Lake Winnia Road is Maple Ridge, so where does that lines?
That is that sitting bowl, Geronimo and Ray at that intersection.
Yeah, that's where this.
It is exactly point four eight miles from the uh, the ninety degree turn right there at Lake Winnia.
All right, so it's not. Not Lake Winnia, it's Geronimo.
Yeah, yeah, it's just further down. Um, any other questions, otherwise? Uh, yeah, it's highways, or bridges, roads, I can't even think of that one right now. One's uh. It'll be all by itself.
I have another question.
One oh, one oh one, four, four, six, eight, two, zero, 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 highway streets and bridges. Yes, sir.
I haven't looked at that line, I then. Does that deplete our funding for road?
No, that puts us uh at a positive balance thus far with dust control, the other previous road agreements that have been brought forward to this body. Of the remainder of roughly seven thousand dollars in that GL.
So this pretty well depletes our fund for the rest of this year.
But it was in anticipation. That this project was going to come to fruition and uh. Uh, not the most. Perfect scenario, but at the same time, we have a shame on us if we don't take advantage of a one-third cost share with a private donor, so.
We haven't paid for any of the other road agreements so far, right?
No, correct. Well, I don't know if we've uh cut a check for the dust control agreement, but no. We do not, because all the road agreements that are always brought forth, and especially with this. It also stipulates that this is uh as close of an estimate as possible, so we have some admin flow. Um, sometimes we're, we're over on one project, but less on another, so. We, with this project, uh, in the last round of road agreements that came before the board, um, we utilized our fifty fifty match with the road commission. Just shy, we're actually still in the black, one hundred and twenty six dollars on fifty fifty match. Uh, and then with this project, uh, we'll have six thousand dollars plus in the coffers. With that being said, uh. Do we have a a motion to move forward with the road agreement with Alpena County Road Commission?
Make the motion.
A motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Dirk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Yes, please.
Make a motion that the township board entered a closed session, consult with the township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation. Pending before Alpena County Circuit Court, due to MCL one five dot two six eight one.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
For.
Yeah. Stevie was quick on the draw there. Moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laughlin.
Yes.
Dirk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. We are now officially in closed session at six forty two. Okay, we're officially back in open session, uh, which draws us to our second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment. Please use the bottom ellipsis online uh to raise your hand, send a message. Is any public comment in person? State your name at the podium.
Um, so just a couple things. Looking for the interim chief. I'm assuming both internal, external, like where would it be posted? Descriptions on it, so. And then. So I know it hasn't been that long, but um. I was kind of hoping to hear a little bit more of like. Maybe ways to move forward with the consultant report and stuff like that, so. But yeah, that's about it.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Kuntch.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Stackle, so I just wanted to thank the board for. Actually taking action on the suggestion I made the last meeting about. Uh, putting the bills into the board packet so that people can see what the township is spending their money on. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that.
Saying no further public comment, uh, is there any discussion for the good of the order? Saying no, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
A motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty one.